Good morning. I have eight thirty on my computer. These clocks are maybe a little bit different. Uh, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Persian County Board of Commissioners. Today is Wednesday, August fourth. Call this meeting to order and our first item of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We had minutes. No, no proof of minutes. Public input. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on that agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Well, the commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Anybody on Zoom? Hearing none. We'll move on. Item number three, review of all agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business.
I do not see.
I don't need that.
So I'll make a motion to that effect.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? My motion passed. Road Department. Good morning.
Great, thanks.
Ah, so usual stuff. Anyhow, we, uh, we hired a secretary yesterday.
Good.
It's a gentleman. So that'll be a first for the outfit. Very hard decision. We had, there was three of them that were very good. So, uh, with what we thought was the most qualified.
So when does the new place start?
Starts Monday.
Monday, great. Okay.
He has spent a lot of time with Department of Taxation and also the Department of Prisons. So knows that state. State bureaucracy a bit, I believe. We'll see.
Okay, good.
Also, I went ahead and hired the, uh, going down the list for the landfill. I don't, I guess I should fill soon then the new guy didn't make it. I don't know if you didn't hear of that, but I'm skipping ahead, but anyhow, I hired Ken Kite. He said, I've interviewed him before. Pretty good guy. Yeah, he comes with a CDO and his, his, uh, in shot training. So that's helpful. We'll see how it works out.
Good.
I don't think he's gonna want, claim to be able to help work everyone like the last one did.
Yeah. Dude, when he sounded good and it sounded like he was gung ho, ready to go to work and just didn't work out.
Yeah. So Road Department been spreading weeds. What are you here at that? Screamed a little dirt here up at the community pit. Uh, we, well, we played a bunch of roads. We're almost done, but last meeting, but finished Dunkin's and we started hauling on Dunkin's. That would be, uh, we're fixing from the bridge to the pavement and that, that is where that company was supposed to come in. Um, and I, you know, I did some soul searching, whether we should do that or not, but it's a stretch of road that, that starts, it gets holes and stuff. It needs gravel. It's need to gravel. It's been on my list to do and it just worked out. So that's what we're doing. Keeps us close. We can haul water that far. The gravel's close. So it's gonna help the Dunkin's lot and probably help that business too. It'll be a pretty good road. So we're working on that.
I found it interesting in the last couple of days that I've been out to Mark, Mark Herlay and where the state did their ship seal oil. They stopped at EP. Didn't go any further. That's still their road, right?
Yeah.
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 They just didn't see the traffic there or something.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, in the Road Department, we cleaned up Grass Valley and Emily twice since I last caught you. Tuesday. Yeah, pretty much. We store them on the weekends and we go after clean them up. Uh, they really got us good in Emily. We're, uh, working with that. I'm gonna talk to the sheriff about that. Uh, somebody tore apart a whole home and probably put, oh, I don't know, Jerry kept like twenty loads, twenty dump tuck loads in the burn pile that can't be burnt. So we, I'm gonna push that and Jerry found out who did it. So, uh,
Well, they need to be fined.
Yeah.
And they need to be charged for whatever.
Yeah.
It costs.
Pretty, pretty egregious, I believe. So we're working on that. Um, also we're, uh, patching Coal Canyon. So that's, uh, I guess I could back up. That's another reason we're doing Dunkin's Road. We can patch in the morning when it's, when it's fairly cool. And we, we're real close to the pit there. Just go to haul and it's makes for a pretty productive day. And we also, uh, I told you guys last time Little Creek was washed out, or I think I did.
Yeah, you did.
Anyhow, we went up there and we placed the cover. So those guys that are mining up there uh, offered to help out and they were a great help. They helped, they hauled us dirt. They supplied a excavator to, uh, dig it out and worked with us, put it in. So we greatly appreciate that. That's interjects. Jonathan Ferrucci is the, one of the founders and that's who I dealt with on that deal. We greatly appreciate, appreciate that. It was a big help. He saved us. You know, all we did was supply the cover, basically. We got the right one up there on the second trip. Otherwise it would have been a really easy day. Somebody loaded up the wrong size. Me, I'm trying to look if I can get the right size. Oh, boy. Anyway, I also had some other washouts. I don't know if I told you about them at last meeting. I don't think I found out till later on that week. Uh, Klondike was washed out, which is the one that goes over Spalding, ends up on Grass Valley Road. So we went and fixed that and then also clear out the Buffalo Rants. Their road, the main road of the ranch washed out and then another road that's an important road for them, uh, to their shipping pins. So we went and fixed that as well. That's, we did more than that, but that's what I got for roads.
And the recycling center's going well. We're getting a lot of recycled, you know, items in and it's being bailed and so.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the landfill, so it'll be good. Uh, I've been giving, giving Stephen as much help as I can, uh, when I can. Jacob's been up there, which I really appreciate. He's gamer about that. Uh, we worked. He worked this last Saturday, but I think he's gonna work this Saturday. He'll be up there later today. I send him up there on the busier days and then also we haul a bunch of dirt for him. So they, you know, the place looks great. I don't know if you guys have been up there. There's no wind blowing there anymore. It's pretty incredible.
Good. Yeah.
There's, it's all cleaned up around the trailer and then I can't remember what Stephen called that other area, but he says that's next.
Oh, the other area.
Yeah. Mitch called it the per pound area.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna get cleaned up this fall. So all the mattresses are gone. We don't have mattresses.
Great. Really?
So what did you do with them?
He's, did what he's supposed to do, bury them.
Okay. Yeah. Cause that looked pretty crappy.
Carol, I mean, Mitch had a good plan. Um, all that debris, downtown debris, mattresses laid out, the debris's gonna go over. Yeah. They're, I mean, they're a big problem.
Yeah.
I don't know. They just will go with, so they're dealt with now. So it's good. Yeah. Of course, we fill the hole up right quick, but that's where that, the game goes. So.
Yeah, the landfill, it keeps getting taller and taller.
Yeah, we're about done going up. We'll flatten that off and hopefully get another hole dug before we fill that hole. It's pretty scary really, how fast that filled up, but basically, cause Mitch's been saving up a lot of stuff and we're doing this or that with it. Never got done. So Stephen took care of it.
Okay, good.
That's pretty much all I have for landfill. As I said, keep us busy, those transfer sites.
Yeah. So if you're still here, when Jerry gets here, you can show him those pictures. Otherwise, go, just go see him.
That's everybody else.
No, good job. Good job. Good job.
Yes, there's, um.
Oh, yeah. The onboard. I don't know if I wrote up figures, but it's the mechanic recommendation is, uh, we should, we should auction it off, not fix it. I think it's like three thousand two to fix and it's only worth about that.
Yeah. So, um.
So we'll just put it aside and for someday that we have another option.
Yeah, that's, that's what I figure if you guys are in it there. And I apologize. I have, I have the figure somewhere.
No, that's okay. I remember it was like thirty-two hundred or something like that anyway. Don't worry about it. But, but yeah, that's probably the best thing.
Yeah.
And then when we get new vehicles in from the sheriff's department and different ones that we've ordered, we'll have some things to auction off. So maybe this fall we can have a county auction and just get rid of some of the stuff, one way or the other.
We have, like it says, the Jeep, the old Jeep needs to go. We have one pickup that needs to go and some assorted stuff.
But not a lot.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm good with not letting it build up.
Yeah, there's no point collecting stuff. And we might be able to do it just online, you know, somehow, which would be easy.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I really don't even wanna talk about this next one. Uh? Oh, geez. My, uh, my nightmare has, has come back. Anyway, the senior senator volunteer coordinator, uh, number of congregant meals and homebound meals being served. Uh, homebound is, uh, twenty-four. I delivered, uh, yesterday and, or Monday and Tuesday. Um, so I delivered meals, uh, actually yesterday I delivered both Tuesday and Wednesday meals, uh, frozen and, uh, they know I'll be back tomorrow, Thursday. Uh, we do have issues there, of course. Uh, we're trying, we've been interviewing for the assistant and the, the cook position. Uh, we've, we've interviewed for the assistant cook. And the bad part of all these applications is not one of them is for a cook.
So do you think that you should put an ad in the paper? Because there's never been.
Yes, it has been in the paper.
I looked.
It has been in the paper. It's on the county website.
It's on the county website.
Facebook.
But I have not, I went through June and July and I have not, I, there's no ad.
Okay, we will continue to look for a cook. Billings and grounds.
Since our last meeting, we replaced the justice board windows and two of the commissioners.
And these are the fancy dancy bulletproof.
Or bullet. They're bullet resistant, nine minutes.
Okay, resistant, not bulletproof.
Yeah. Um, yeah, we did the two commissioners assistance when those two, she had some bad leaks in there. Um, so it was just easier just to get them all. But there was a frosted glass for the bathroom. It was supposed to call obscured. They did, they didn't do that in a laminate. So we actually had to send that out to a separate shop. Oh. To have that, they don't do laminate glass and obscure.
So bullet resistant.
Yeah.
So what does it do differently?
It doesn't shatter.
It just doesn't shatter. It doesn't.
It just, it just stays in place like a windshield.
Yeah, okay.
We'd have to have a whole lot thicker to be more effective.
Yeah.
But this is instead of, uh, like an eighth inch piece of glass, it's a quarter inch sandwiched with plastic.
Yeah.
It holds it in place. And so if they break it, it won't just fall away out. It's just, it's a little harder to get in and out of, but as far as uh, bullet resistance, it slows it down some.
Yeah.
We've been getting ready for frontier days and doing weeds. Spraying everywhere and breaking stuff up out of it.
Yeah.
Um, worked on the ball fields, weeds at the airport sprayed. Doing, uh, trying to get the park ready for, which should start probably sometime tomorrow. They'll be coming out to mark off their locations and setups to start on Friday. No. I, uh, I've got everything that they need. So at least as far as I know, ready to go. That's what we've done in the past. So I'm just waiting. And then, uh, there's a softball tournament going on this weekend. Um, uh, ball fields ever. Bringing them work, uh, make sure everything's.
A tournament out there that starts like Friday or something.
Friday evening, I think they're doing.
So we have a softball tournament. We have frontier days and we have races on the same weekend.
Yeah, and worship tournament as well.
It's a busy weekend.
It is a very busy weekend.
Yeah.
Um, other than that's kind of what we've been doing. Just, uh, just busy doing that stuff.
So we have on here a salary resolution for Javier Valtiera.
Yes. Uh, the reason being is when he left, it was that, that view scale, not the scale, but his rate, his range.
Yeah.
I think that would be fair to bring him back at.
Oh, back at that range.
They're back at it.
So when you hired him a couple of weeks ago, you'd
It was.
You just hired him.
I hired him with the, with the intentions of bringing him as, at his, what his former range.
Okay. So it does a twenty-four, two?
Correct. He's a very good hand. Uh, it's nice to have somebody that didn't have to hundred percent.
Yeah.
He's a good, good worker. Gets along with each other.
Yeah. Good. Right?
And I'll second that.
Do you turn your microphone on? There you go.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion that. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Library, I don't see anybody on Zoom. No. Hiring ambulance. Rodney's here.
Ambulance, we're still very, very busy. Um, actually, we have a, a med flight come in the other night, couldn't make it to Reno. Was late, so we, we helped them out, went out to Derby, picked up their patient and their crew and took them to Reno and, uh,
Oh, cleared to Derby?
Yeah.
Oh, I, you just.
Derby and went to Reno to renowned and then.
Ah, gotcha. Yeah. They couldn't get into Reno?
No, and we actually, it was a really strong front that went through there. It was raining like crazy. You could probably see the road.
Oh, the rain day. Yeah.
So anyhow, we did that, took the crew over to the airport so they could, uh, get a car so they could go back to Elko. So anyhow, we did that the other night. Got back about one. But anyhow, the ambulance been busy. Um, we're still having the same problems that we've been fighting for the last quite a few months of having enough people to, to cover calls, you know, same people doing the same calls. We're hoping we're getting close to a resolution to do something about that. It's been going on for quite a while. Committee's been going what, twenty months now?
We got a final report yesterday.
They did get a final report? So they're gonna talk about that today?
No.
That's me? No. Okay. So anyhow, that's been going. We've got, um, our new ambulance, nine oh one is down right now. We, uh, went to park it last night and the, um, we have no power to any of the radio or lights and stuff. So I did troubleshoot that. It's a relay. So after I get out of here today, I'll see if I can get that relay out and figure out.
We'll find out. We'll find another one somewhere.
Yeah, to get another one. So I might be running in to pick one of those up this afternoon.
Is that something Napa does maybe?
Well, I'll, I'll definitely check here first and make sure I can find the parks, but if I can't, then I'll do some calling and see if I can get one. Anyhow, so then we had, uh, basically we'll get it back going. We still need to be thinking about getting a new ambulance ordered. But we, I mean, cause it's gonna be six months or more out once we do order. So we're getting to that point where we probably should be thinking about replacing.
We are thinking about it. Uh, there's a couple of things that's working there. One is this, uh, care spending that's coming out.
Uh, I know we put in.
I've asked the city to consider on their side with them to replace the ambulance and we'll see what they say.
Well, that's a good idea. Um, so anyhow, we're, that's where we're at with that. On the fire side, we have, we actually have a, uh, a big fire down in the colony last night. We had a big, big, in the back of their property back there. They've been cleaning that off. They had a huge brush pile back there. So some, for some reason that caught on fire and it was cooking pretty good. So we had, um, two engines and a tanker and a brush truck and BLM in there and, uh, got that fire out. So.
Do you build a colony?
No.
So we need.
That is actually, the colony is a, uh, it's actually federal and it's under BLM. So actually we were just mutual aid basically with the BLM. So, and they, they roped off an area. They've got an investigator coming out this morning. I'll go over there and check on that when I get out this morning to see what they found on him. But anyhow, we had a big fire there and that went for quite a while last night too. So the guys have been really busy.
Yeah.
We had, uh, one of the trucks, uh, one of the valves on it fail and we were able to get it off. It's what it is. It's a ball valve. And when you shut it off, it's to one of the, to the monitor on the top. So it still leaks a little bit. So I'll get some support. All of our trucks are getting older too. So we're just gonna start running into some of these repairs and stuff like that. Actually, they probably should go in every seven years or so and have all the valves gone through, you know, have, you know, take it in and have them, everything replaced. So, but we've never had to do that. We just kind of.
Where is a place like that?
The, uh, there's a new, um, outfit that just opened up in, uh, the Parkway for, I think it's Pierce, um, fire trucks. And they do warranty work and work on, on engines and stuff. So I'll be checking with them to see, see if we can get some trucks in there to get them repaired if we have a problem. And, uh, otherwise we're the same amount of people doing the same thing.
So you need to, next budget cycle, you need to get some of that kind of stuff in the.
We'll start working them in, cause they're getting to that age. We replace tires before they end the, before the end of the last fiscal year. Um, so we have some of them that have like seven years on the tires. So we put in, pull them off, replace all of them. So, okay, that's, that ate up the budget pretty quick. And, uh, yeah, that's where we're at right now.
Do you know what the status is on grants?
On grants, um, Mike's, I think he talked about a safer grant is up.
That's, we're gonna talk about that a little bit, yeah, yeah, coming up.
Yeah, the, uh, fire inspections, I've been going with Mike on all inspection. We have the one, one business that we did have some problems with and we brought the fire marshal in. Um, they, uh, they did get a little bit of that stuff done. We went back and looked at it last, last week. It wasn't, went down and talked to the gentleman and they're still waiting on some stuff to come in. So we're, he got a deadline date on when that's supposed to be done and, uh, Mike will be reporting to the fire marshal on that. But that's going real good and all the inspections have been, well, real receptive and, uh, have gone real good.
Good.
I'm sure we're gonna run into some more as we go down through the, some of the other businesses where we're gonna have some problems, but, you know, it'll be.
Rain, what was the one yesterday, eh, the F AFG grant? Yeah, gee, that was, uh, delinquent in being submitted.
The financial.
He was, he emailed me back and he was gonna come talk to you.
Yeah, so we, and I talked to Reed about that also. So if, if it comes to the point where that doesn't go, we'll split that up to the, uh, the groups that got this.
Yeah.
And so, and then we'll just take it out of the budget and go from there again. Hopefully we can get that resolved too.
Yeah.
And see, that's all age here too. So we have thirty days left.
Yeah. But anyway, he said he was gonna go talk to Rain.
The, uh, city, um, I did put in the budget to get the firehouse painted, the old firehouse, and they're gonna have that painted. And that should, that prob, probably should start in the next week or so. They're gonna.
Right pink?
They're gonna paint it, yeah.
Right pink?
The color.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be white with red trim. Yeah. Or it's supposed to match the.
Boy, that went right over your head.
Red, yeah, not a lot of red paint. Uh, try to keep it down with them, cause it fades so quick. It's just, it's, it's, yeah. Yeah. So anyhow, that's gonna be going on and, uh, that's all we got.
Okay.
Right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Sean on? Nope. So we don't kind of graph out. He was gonna be on too. So I'll leave that one for a little bit. He may come back. No Emily, uh, Wright Patch had a report. I don't have it up here. Anyway, they had sent through a report on number of calls and, uh, volunteers, but I didn't print it off. So number six is review of reported emergency services subcommittee. Uh, this, we're not, I, we're not ready to review that. We, that just came out yesterday. Uh, but the other part of that is approval to apply for a safer grant. And I put that on there so we could at least get the ball rolling on that. Uh, what a safer grant will do if we get it. And this year it's already, uh, the application period is not there, but it'll be coming up again soon. Uh, so we just need approval to apply for a safer.
And what would it be?
And a safer grant can be used, can be used. One of the things, you may be able to tell more about that, uh, is to pay for fire department personnel.
So before it's written though, will it come to us so that we know what they're applying for?
I, I don't know the terminology that's in the report, but we'll find out.
Before you can meet up, then I think commissioners have to approve it. So.
Yeah. So let them unleash. We, we need to approve, applying for the grant. He can bring us back or they can bring us back what they're applying for and then we're gonna go from there.
But in this grant, it's a three-year grant, ninety percent the first year, eighty second year and seventy third year.
Employee part.
Then we have to find the money.
Yes, we will.
To continue this.
Yep.
That's a problem.
So when is this, this safer grant due?
Cause I.
I can't do, uh.
I wanna say February.
Okay, so we can hold off and have a workshop talking about public safety and what direction we want to go and we have time to do that before we approve the safer grant.
Well, if we, if we, if they, we want to apply for the grant, they probably should start writing it now.
That's what I see.
Oh, yeah, you need to get, you wanna get moving on there right away.
Well, that's fine, but I'd like to know what's gonna be in it exactly and how we're gonna continue to fund it and have that discussion. So do you wanna go ahead and, and start writing it with the anticipation that it might happen? I'm not saying it's not going to, but we're asked to approve something that we haven't even really talked about.
Well, you're not gonna prove it today. Is that what you're asking?
That's what we have to, basically, the commissioners have.
I'm asking for approval to proceed with the safer.
Yes, application, applying for the safer.
No, I think that's what you really wanna do, this approval to, to, to start the process. You're not approving the grant yet. If you can do that, I'm sure people can tell you how you wanna do that.
But we also need, we also need to have this on the next agenda. So we need to discuss this and, and we just, I will make a motion to. Yes.
They could start writing it.
Actually, actually the way that it appears on the agenda item.
Apply.
It reads approval to apply for the safer, safer grant, which would be in completion.
So it probably would be best, if not committed to do so, to. Table that, but the fire department can draft. What their expectations are in that application and then. Then you can approve it. But right now, the way it is written as an agenda item, it reads approval. But treats as final.
Approval to apply.
Right, which means the application will be turned, turned in.
So. Let's put this item on the next agenda and basically the fire department. Proceed and present that to the commission, please.
Like.
Yep.
Like I say, just as it appears on the agenda, it reads as final approval. So you basically want to outline this of what it's gonna.
Yes, please.
Okay, community center. We do have.
Things are going well, it sounds. And Larry also has her and I, I would appreciate it if you didn't take her from me.
Okay.
No comment. That, that position isn't open yet, so. Okay. What part of attention? Nobody from, attention, nobody on them? Uh, that brings us up to the IT department.
Okay, um, so we have. Uh, we have completed our network security assessment with, um. CISA, the, the agency, that's part of the Department of Homeland Security that focuses on cybersecurity. Um, we are scheduled to, we, we have our outbrief on Friday. I'm expecting a draft report, um, within the next couple of weeks. Um, from which I will, I will, um. Provide a, a, a kind of, a, a, a report that's scrubbed of sensitive information for, uh, the commissioners to review. Um. The preliminary findings is that we have, we, are, are what we expect. We have, we have a lot of work to do, especially in the realm of training. Um, so I have, um, provided. Uh, dur- during our, our safety committee meeting yesterday, I did provide all the members of the safety committee with a catalog and. A, a selection form for their departments to, um, let me know. Which cybersecurity training courses they wanna do for their departments, along with my recommendations. As to which courses they need to have. Um. We try, I tried to present it in a flexible way so that, uh, the departments could. Fit them in with, within their work, but it's definitely something that's important for everybody who even touches a computer. Whether as part of work or in their personal lives is. Uh, cyber, the, the, the cybersecurity of the county doesn't end when you clock out.
Yes.
You, you're, you're still, there's, you're still known as an employee and could still be taking advantage after your personal. Um, through your personal use of the internet and computers, so, um.
You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
You really did.
Thank you. Um, we are, Heidi and I have been working very hard, um, on, uh, broadband project. Um, we're trying, we're, we're really trying to, um. Get everybody on board with a phased approach. Uh, to, so that we can, we can get, we can start going down the road to where we want to be. But still make it fit within our business case. Um, wi- within, within budgets and, and all the responsibilities that come along with. Uh, handling public funds, so, um, we're making, we're making progress. It's slow, but it is absolutely forward progress. Um, had a good meeting with a bunch of folks from the governor's office of science innovation and technology yesterday. Uh, they're, they're going to be providing us, um, with a bunch of information that we can. Uh, we can use as we move forward in our own plans. Um.
Are they gonna give us any money?
No.
No. That's what we could use the most of.
Well, and see that. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, s- speaking on that, our, our issue isn't the one-time costs. Because there, there's, there's all sorts of funding opportunities coming. Um, ARPA, bunch of, a bunch of grants. That we could, we could use, but they're all one-shot deals. What do we do with? The bill after the grant funds are gone? And that, we, we just, we just have to start putting money towards that. Um. Internet tech, technology in general is not, is, is probably the most important. Part of a lot of our operations. I, I would say most of our operations that aren't performed by people physically going out and, um, slinging shovels. Um, and that's not going to become less of a case, even those folks are gonna be impacted by it as we move down the road. Um, so yeah, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be, we just have to start putting money in the budget toward it. Um, we are, we've, I. We have also started with our first steps towards, um, improving, improving our internet enough to support our new phone system. Um, in IS is actually at the sheriff's office right now. Um, pulling some cable for the new, the new radios, um, on the tower. Uh, that all of the other buildings will point to, so that's moving forward. Um. And there have been a lot of support tickets. We've had, we've had new equipment come in. I've had to troubleshoot connected, network connectivity for. Different offices, um. Quite, quite frankly, there is, uh, as, as always, there is more work than, uh, can be handled by one person. So. That's all I have for you.
That's a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Economic development. Good morning.
So, the treasure is on the agenda today. But it will also be in town on Tuesday. So the, the treasure is gonna be here on Tuesday at the community center five P M. Um, they're gonna do a workshop on, um, every, every Nevada, every county. I'm sorry. There's several, seven different points in that plan. Um, we're gonna have stations around the community center where, um. Leaders and ordinary, you know, leaders in our residents can go around and chit chat about, um, different topics. Um, and get feedback on those seven points of, of interest, I guess. So I'm helping arrange that, so. I am encouraging you all to attend. I will be sending out emails to all the different offices. Putting out Facebook blasts, and that's about the best I can do to get the information out there, because this started like Wednesday last week. By the time I talked to the gentleman and scheduled the day, that was Friday. It was too late to get anything into the newspaper. Um, otherwise, um, we did have a board meeting on Monday, finally have a forum, finally have a full board. Thank you for getting that ordinance done. My question in regards to that though is. Do we need to shuffle where a couple of members actually came from on that board? Um, currently, the way it used to be, we have, the county has, um. I think five members appointed and the city only has two. So does that need to be balanced in this? So how?
Well, it depends on what the ordinance says. If the ordinance is specific, that says in it.
The ordinance says that there should be four appointed by the ci- county.
Okay, then that ordinance needs to be changed if you want to change the structure.
No, no, I've already had the structure changed. I'm just wondering about the current board members.
Oh, okay.
Like say BJ was appointed by the county, but should he now be a city? I, I don't know. Do we need to, do we need to? So you did put him in the city at large? Okay, and that's my question was, how did those get divvied back out?
I have, when we, I think when you and I talked a while ago. We have Sheila as the commissioner representative, Pat as the city's representative, Dave Skelton's city appointment. Ted Bedore coming at large, Michael Springfield coming at large, BJ's city at large.
No, I have the Morgan Root.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure everyone was where they should be if there needed to be any other cleanup going on.
Kind of just put them where.
And, and I was, I was fine with that. I just wanted to. I didn't know if it was really a big deal, but I had a couple of people asking if it was a big deal, so that's why I'm bringing it up. Okay, that's it.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lacy, while you're looking at that, you know, the board people that are on the board.
We have the inter-local agreement. Don't worry, lady.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, let's, let's, I'm going to reword the, um. I saw Kent Moner yesterday and he's been the one drafting that information. So I saw him yesterday, um, at the city meeting. Um, he'll have, um, rewording for that, so I'm gonna reword it for your next agenda. When I'm not, we'll actually hear on that, on that topic, uh, next week, so, uh, we're, we're moving forward. We're not behind the fall, so.
Okay.
No worries.
Okay, thank you. Lacy on the, uh, senior center board? I talked to Suzie Ben Duer. She, she's, I'm the understanding she's still on the board, but. A copy I had, had a vacancy there.
Yeah.
She said she didn't remember getting a letter, so she probably did and didn't respond to. Didn't need just something from her.
She would just have another letter saying that she's still interested.
Okay.
And that expired in January.
Yeah, so I have just.
Yes, so that would be.
Yeah, okay. Public defender, we do have a report. As Todd says, it, it, it looks like he's very busy. And, as usual. Any other comments on his report? That brings us to code enforcement. We have some pictures.
Hi, friend. Great, thank you. Been a busy one. Um, so you saw the pictures?
So, so the one place that, that by those pivots, it got cleaned up, it looks like. You got that?
Yeah. It was some sort of.
It was what?
Bird thing.
Oh, yeah.
I think way back in the day, they were cockfighting.
Oh.
That was about.
Yuccos. And then this one, I remember seeing that sitting along the frontage road.
Yeah.
And now it's gone. Good.
So I, I am trying to, um, work on some of those ones like off the freeway.
Yeah.
It's just not as easy as it sounds. Some of them take a bit of time. I have another one up there in the city right off the road. That's gonna be.
We don't have the pictures.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I have hundred and seventy-six open complaints. I resolved, well, the property owners resolved twenty of them. I have eleven new complaints and my complaint activity, or four hundred and fifty-five.
Well.
That's including telephone calls, visits, letters, things like that. Um, the breakdown by the area, I have eighty-seven open complaints in Grass Valley, twenty-four in Emily and Mill City. Twelve in Love Lock, twenty-nine in the Orianna, Wright Patch area and twenty-four in the remote areas. Um, the result breakdown, there were three resolved in Grass Valley, one resolved in. Emily, one resolved in Love Lock, two. In the Wright Patch Orianna area and three in the remote areas. And we had gone to court for one other case and one that. And, um, they came into compliance. So that's.
That's great work, so.
What's the latest on the chiropractor?
So he got his final notice, but he is talking about some property and if he does, I have to start over, start my.
He's talking about selling his property? Yeah, this is a, a prime one where we should be going in, cleaning it up and filing a lien. Before he sells the property, otherwise we're in limbo.
Right, I think that's something that we'd have to discuss with.
Yeah.
Or price, cause that's the legal end of it, so.
Okay.
So when was the fire chiropractor's office?
I don't remember when it was. It was, I know I didn't really get the complaint on it until. May, April, May.
So it was still cold. So it had to be.
I think it was like. I think it burned down in the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
And then I got a complaint.
Didn't know about it till.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh.
I don't get out that far in the valley.
It's ugly and it needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, so like I said, he's on his final notice. He's got.
Cause he kept telling you, he had somebody coming to clean it.
Right, so when they don't follow through, they get their next notice and then they say something else and then have another plan. They don't follow through. They get another notice and. So that's where we're at right now.
So how many notices are given?
So you get, uh, first, second and final, and then you get a thirty-day notice.
So is he on his thirty-day?
He's on his final notice, so in ten days he'll get his thirty-day notice. So and that's whether it's, even if he starts it, if it's not cleaned up in ten days, he'll get that thirty-day notice. So in our reality, he has like forty-five day, or forty days to get it finished.
Forty days, what does the county do?
Then we send it for.
I've filed criminal charges.
Criminal charges? And then that's pretty much when the county can go in, clean it up and name the property.
Uh.
It has to go to court.
There, there, there are, there are a couple of different processes there. Um, there's a, a civil track, which would include, uh, county cleanup abatement cost. We have found that it is more effective that when people are filed with criminal charges and they realize that they're actually facing. Six months in jail and significant fines. Uh, that's kind of what happened with our lovable, welcome to Love Lock camper that was out on the front of drug for the last three years. Um, the, the second that, uh, the second you're in court, looking at a judge realizing that these. Letters are actually of significance.
Yeah.
Uh, it generally. Spurs rapid response. So.
So maybe in this next phase, the, yeah.
So, so what I would foresee, honestly, Commissioner Hudson, um, and I hope I'm not speaking outside of my name, but I. Handle friends cases, so, uh. The situation that I foresee where we would use that, uh, civil remedy of additional fines, abatments, liens, et cetera. Would be in the event that we convicted somebody, they paid the fine and then the nuisance remained. So.
Maybe that'll do it.
And, and I understand. And, and I understand, I understand the frustration with the, the process and it seems like it's lengthy. It kind of turns into this real property shell game. But, you know, we have, we have policies that we have to follow and, and ultimately, you know, even though our codes have been being constitutional, there are certain. Due process situations that, that prevent us from going in and just running roughshod.
Just.
Which, which on some of them I would, I would like.
Just go tear it down, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? No, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're doing great.
Good job. Lacy Donaldson.
I don't have any tax.
Oh, thank you very much.
I feel see those eventually. I think most of them are just like financial assessments. Right after the last meeting, I went on vacation, so that's why. The office has been very busy already with tax collection and my new employees start something. So we're all ready for.
Oh, I thought she'd already started. Monday. Oh.
I'm calling us.
Okay, let's go back to public defenders since he just appears. Morning.
Morning. Yeah. Um. Sometimes struggle with what we're about to say, you know, dealing with, I think, as I've said last couple of months, so a lot of change in the law. And now a whole new ground after a new legislative session. I think the one that stands out the most is the one that I'll do wait. Within forty eight hour calendar initial appearance as opposed to initial days before. So. That's going to be interesting. Moving forward, that essentially puts me, you know, either at work or on call twenty four seven, three sixty five.
When is that one effective, isn't it?
July first, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty two.
But not really a big deal on your standard weekends, but once you start getting into holiday, three day weekends and whatnot, that can be. A little impactful. We just have to see how that plays out. But I think it's one of those just massive. Unfunded type of mandates that. I guess simply I kind of wonder if it was meant to. Get the rural counties to say, go ahead and take it overstate because that's a big cost you just imposed on us with no funding mechanism. Other than that, I guess just similar to those changes, you know, like there would be. I, I think entire calendar fiscal years where I wouldn't have what I would call issues of first impression under the law. Where it seems now that I'm working on multiple ones, you know, motion work wise at the same time. So, so yeah, there's just a lot of new law and uncertainty from my perspective, I guess. But other than that, you know, thing, things in Persian County are good in the office and. Handling things as they're coming at us.
Thank you. Thank you for your report.
Yeah. Any questions? All right. Thank you much. Thank you.
Rain Child.
The auditors will be visiting us probably a couple of days this month and then they'll be out in one full weekend. So we are still doing the two year process. And this.
No, but thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Lori Srinay, anybody on Zoom, Captain?
She is connected and I'm not sure if she is listening in right this moment.
Not right this.
I just got this.
Oh.
I don't think she's.
No.
No update, she says.
No updates, okay. Uh, Bryce Shields, you don't kind of look like him, but.
Yes, I mean, shorter, less handsome. Understood. Uh. So I guess just as far as our force concerned, kind of. I guess mirror what Mr. Cochran said. There have been a number of changes in the law. It's created an influx of motion work. The. I think kind of the, the tapering off of the, the pandemic coupled with a renewed vigor by law enforcement has. Caused an influx of cases. Interesting, interesting fact patterns. So. Things are only good on that front. The staff is going well. As Ms. Machado said, from a code enforcement standpoint, things are going very well. We actually had a meeting yesterday with the, the state child support and we are getting a new child support. System, software system that's going to allow our citizens to access different payment portals. And perhaps have more access to online information to kind of streamline that process. But on the whole. Things are running relatively smooth, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Judge Stevens, no. Jerry Allen's not here as yet. We do have a salary resolution that we can. Prove Alfonso Gonzalez has passed post. So he's due for an adjustment in salary.
So I have a question for you, Rain. This salary resolution goes back to May twentieth of twenty one. Can you even do a payroll adjustment?
It all goes to the year. We cannot go back.
Right. So it would be July first, Ben. Okay. And that's the best that we can do.
The only time we could do that double period is that last week.
Sure.
Which was paid on July.
Okay.
So we can't look back to.
Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the salary resolution for this individual. He has completed post. And it's to deputy sheriff two, twelve, step one, but it would be effective July first, twenty twenty one.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second for a salary resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion back. Okay, proclamation that awards. We have two. One is unfortunate. I don't think you can be here today. I wish you could. One is for. Bill Sorias and twenty year. And we'll get that to his family. The other one is for Nathan Carmichael, who is not here, and we'll get that to him through the show.
And I want to thank them for their service to the county for all that time. And Bill was an excellent employee. The funeral was very nice on Saturday.
Yes, it was. So next one is on, on the same topic is a. Is to, is asked a memorial for Bill to be placed either at the courthouse park or the playground. So there's been a discussion about. A plaque at the playground. And a lot of that is because Bill took that place to heart and did a lot of work out there. So is a plaque of some kind.
What about the metal arch? We have locals too.
Oh, so, so I mean, like the ones that Anthony Mora does, that kind of thing, that, that wouldn't be good. And it doesn't have to just be a plaque.
Yeah. And I was thinking a bench, a memorial bench. Wait, there's one at the front of the elementary school for a student, you know, something like that, that it would have his name and his dates of service and. First dedication to the park. I think that would be really nice.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So what we have to do to make that happen.
Well.
So let's approve something like that and then we can make it happen.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve. A.
A bench or some kind of.
Yes. And I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion back. So a bench.
And then we'll have John hand to go, you know, do the costing and see what it is and.
Yeah. Board appointments, we have. One.
We have Tori Apperson and.
Paul Schler.
Two applicants for one position at Grass Valley.
Oh, really? Yes.
And Paul Schler has been doing that and continues to attend the meetings religiously. So I would recommend that we, or make a motion that we reappoint him.
Yes.
I will second.
He does a good job.
And he comes to our meetings.
And he does. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion back.
And if you could send Tori Apperson a letter thanking her for interest and something nice to let her know, we appreciate it.
So next thing up is Derby Field. There's a lot going on at Derby Field. As you know, we have a grant to. Install a taxiway out there. That would have alleviated the issue we had last month with the guy that abandoned his airplane on the taxiway.
Did he ever cover the airplane?
Oh, yeah, yeah. But so the other thing going on there is we have surveyors out there now. I was out to yesterday. They're surveying for the upcoming, upcoming project. Had calls not be long ago about. Is there a map that shows the underground electric out there? The planning department couldn't find one. Few Montrose couldn't, thought he had something, couldn't find one. So anyway, they're out there doing, and I went out there yesterday and drove this, the whole length of it. And it's, it's kind of apparent, rather apparent where the underground is just with bull boxes. So they're going to make do. The other thing going on out there is our, as usual, the, the gate problem. We did do a fix on that. Two weeks ago. Anyway, it hasn't worked. So they are back to the drawing board in discussions on how to fix it. There is a fix for it. We'll see what they do. In, in the meantime, it's stuck in the open position. It doesn't block anybody from going in.
It's, it was not, it's just been done.
It's like.
No, that how long has the gate been there? It hasn't been there that long.
Oh, no.
And we've had nothing but trouble.
And it's been, this has been transpiring since about. Uh, well, no, ten minutes after they left the site.
Oh, no.
I mean, that's not the right way to say it. But it has.
Ongoing problem.
It's an ongoing issue.
The old tail light warranty.
Yeah, tail light warranty. And actually, the good part is, is it is under warranty and they are honoring that. They have, you know, I've done phone calls with their technician with, he sent me parts, I've replaced parts. And they just, that's not the issue. So they have another fix. That they've had to do on a similar issue in Carson, I believe. Anyway, they're discussing it now.
Is there, is there a way around that if the gate doesn't go up?
There is. There's a gate right next to it.
So we can just open that gate?
Yeah, yes.
Saturday night would refer.
Yeah, well, it was probably open Saturday night, wouldn't it?
No, it was closed.
It was closed, okay. Also, you guys made it stick open.
Probably. Cause it all, cause we had to, it went back down after we went in.
Well.
And when we came back, we just pulled up to it, it went up and we went through it.
Huh, perfect.
It worked for them.
Yeah, it worked.
So whatever.
Yep, good job. It didn't work yesterday. Anyway. The other thing, and we're going to talk about this further down the agenda under. The Nevada State Treasurer's information and funding is what, one we've talked about is our eight inch water line. As you know, I did a project estimate on it and I have a quote back from Far West Engineering to do what they need to do. Or at least to start the process and my estimate was actually just a hair high. So. So we're, we're good there as far as cost. What they do have to do, and when, when do we say go for starting? Is they have to file a permit application with the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water, BSDW. Before anything can be done. So we need to. Approve something doing that.
Commissioner.
Yes.
I think you take a break from the Derby Field action and get Mr. Craig on.
Oh, I can do that. Okay. I'm about done there anyway. So we, we just, and we can talk about that more at the bottom of the agenda. Okay, we can jump to nine thirty. Des Craig, Economic Recovery Coordinator. Good morning.
It is so good to see you, Des.
Thank you. You know.
It's been a long time.
Chairman, Attorney Commissioner, Staff, morning. My name is Des Craig and thank you very much for this opportunity to. Be here today and to present to you. I'm representing Western Nevada Development District today. And better known as W N D D. And W N D D is an economic development district designated by the Economic Development Administration of the U S. Department of Commerce. And let me give you a little bit of introduction there. It's a member driven organization. And currently has seven counties and seven municipalities and eighteen associate members here in northwestern Nevada. And its mission is to work in regional collaboration. So regional organization works across the region. Regional collaboration with public and private entities to create an environment within which. Economic development can occur. Now, it's not a regional development authority. There are regional development authorities throughout Nevada. It's not a regional development authority, but it works in hand closely with the regional development authorities and it helps get the environment ready for economic development. So ID's organization recently formed, helps bring in businesses and helps create economic development. We work with those regional development authorities. And creating that environment for economic development. So Persian County has been a member of W N D D for many years. And we're grateful for that support and has cooperated with W N D D on a number of projects. And those projects have been included in our regional comprehensive economic development strategy. So we're an economic development planning agency. And every year we put together that comprehensive economic development strategy. Otherwise, no one has assessed. We do that every year. So that's a little bit of background on the W N D D. But I'm here today looking for your support for our region wide broadband. Mapping project. So I'm here to, to ask you, my recommendation is to ask you to approve funding to Western Nevada Development District. At a, for a project at a cost not to exceed two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for this region wide broadband mapping project. And in conjunction with that, asking for your approval for community outreach support from Persian County to work hand in hand with that mapping project. To engage residents, businesses and institutions in the area to participate, to participate in this broadband mapping project. And we'll get into the project itself a little bit more detail and explain what that is as we go on. But let me start off with. Just a bird's eye view, an overview of what this project is, and then we'll drill down a little bit more detail as we go through. So if you like an executive summary of what this, what this project's about. At our board meeting on June twenty eighth, the W N D D board meeting, this project, this project was proposed and I presented a proposal to the board and it was unanimously approved on that occasion. And as part of that approval, we were directed as staff to put it in writing, proposal if you like, and, and report and share that with our local government and member agencies. And I hope you have an opportunity to read that report or to look at that report. And can you bring up? Can you bring up that PowerPoint presentation just a second, a second? So it's a very simple PowerPoint, so you'll see that as we go through. Yeah, so I, I prepared that report and. It was shared with all of the, all of the local government and member agencies and the recommendations were included in that. The broadband mapping project will produce, at the end of the day, will produce a, a map of the W N D D region. Identifying areas at street level, right down at street level. That are most in need of reliable, affordable access to broadband service. But in addition to that, the map will have GIS layers of information built into it. That will be used to develop infrastructure project grant applications for communities in the region. Resulting in more robust broadband connectivity service across the region. So it won't just be a nice picture, it won't just provide a picture of where the needs are. It will be a tool. And that's very important, but I stress that. It won't just be a nice picture showing where the gaps are and where the needs are. That will just sit there on someone's desk and collect dust. It will be an active tool that can be used for application. To those who have funds for projects that then will result in better connectivity across the region. Here in Lovelocky, in Persian County and across the entire region. So it will show the gaps in service, but it will also be used for. Getting money, getting access to some of this money, this avalanche of money that we believe is coming down for broadband and for broadband connectivity. The project will cost in total for the entire region forty thousand dollars, which divided across our fourteen members. Local government members will be two thousand eight hundred and fifty per W N D D local government member. And I should stress too that that is a manual subscription for W N D D members for use of this interactive map. Why annual? Because the map has to be refreshed. It's gonna have to be kept active. It's gonna have to be a living document for a number of years. And we don't know how many, how many years, but let's say two to three years to keep it active and so that communities can continue to apply for funding. For as long as this funding lasts, so that we can continue to have use of this, this map. A little bit more detail, that's, that's the overview, that's the big picture, that's the bird's eye view if you, if you like. Let me drill down a little bit more. More detail, do you get a little bit more detail to you and then kind of enough for questions? Broadband, as we know, is, is gonna be, is really gonna be needed by everybody going forward. It's becoming vital in our society for. Kids right through to, 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 to business, it's gonna be widely used. And we discovered that during the COVID nineteen pandemic, just how, how much. How much of an integral part in our society it's going to play. It's a bit like going back to the thirties and forties of the last century when we discovered electrification and electricity is really gonna be. Was gonna be needed and is needed. So likewise with the internet today, it's needed for, yes, it's needed for, 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 for. Streaming and so forth, entertainment, but more importantly, it's gonna be needed for education, telehealth, commerce and so forth. Businesses are not gonna come to communities unless there is good broadband and high, high speed internet connections and we're discovering that more and more today. And across the region, it's generally poor and Persian County particularly so. We could spend a lot of time there showing your figures and you know it yourselves. It's generally poor. In the twenty twenty five sets, that was, that was prepared last year in twenty twenty. Now, there was a project that was put in there and we called it the broadband needs assessment project. And it never got started, it never got off the ground. It wasn't commenced, it wasn't done. Why? Because of COVID nineteen, it just never got started. Instead, the federal government gave W N D D money to do what was called the Economic Recovery and Resiliency Planning Project. And that got started last year about, about this time last year. And continued right through the winter and was just recently wrapped up in twenty twenty one. And as part of that planning project, there were fourteen teams put together, manufacturing, mining, agriculture, economic development. Health and wellness, tourism and so forth, finance, et cetera. And all fourteen of those teams, when they got together and looked at the issues and challenges that COVID nineteen had, had caused. Throughout, throughout the entire region. The number one issue and challenge that those teams came up with. And broadband connectivity across the, across the entire region. So clearly, it's very, very clear, very, very easy to see that something had to be done about this. So in March of this year, I started looking into it in more detail and started researching, not just in our own region, not just in the state, the entire. Looking at the entire country to see what are other states doing? What, what are universities doing? What's the federal government doing about this? It became very clear very soon that everybody's talking about this, everybody. Well, they are doing it in the sense that they're putting a lot of money aside for this. The American Rescue Plan passed in March of this year. The, the big one point nine trillion, there's heaps of money in that for broadband, as we discovered. Two point nine million of that has come to Nevada and Heidi just talked about they're coming here next week. To talk to you about, how do we spend this money? We'll get out there and tell them, you want it for broadband, we want money for broadband. And hold them, hold them to this. So to react and get a piece of this money for broadband right here in Lovelocky, right here in Persian. And tell them and ask them, and how do we get hold of this? How do we use this money? Because we don't have the money here. So, you know, hold on to this. The E D A last week or two weeks ago on July twenty second announced. They're, how they're gonna spend a few billion. There's, there's broadband money in there as well. And you may have heard Biden administration just recently announced that there's sixty five billion dollars in their infrastructure package, again for. Broadband. So they are talking, you're right, they're talking about having all this money available. And communities are wondering, well, how can we get hold of this? Well, one of the way, one of the ways, I believe, is to have your map ready, show the gaps and then start creating grant applications to get hold of this money. So in June of this year, May of this year, W N D D reformed an action team, regional broadband action team. And Heidi is on it and a number of other people are all from across the region. And we met in June, meeting again this week and we agreed that we need more data. We need more information. Justin sat in on that meeting back in June and we agree we need more data, we need to collect more information on where the gaps are. Where the needs are. And one of the, one of the, one of the outputs from that meeting was we need to do something more about mapping. And indirect broadband map is one way of collecting and collating more data. So we propose to go ahead and do that and we need some assistance from all of our member communities and that's where we're at at the moment. As going around the communities and asking for this assistance, that's forty thousand dollars to do this indirect of that. And this indirect amount will involve, as I say, community assistance. It will involve taking local internet speed tests, it's as simple as that. We ask the communities to go onto a website, we'll bring in consultants, obviously, we're not gonna do this yourself. We'll bring in contractors, we'll set up a website. Ask the community to go onto that website, do a simple speed test, put in their, put in their zip code, show their location. Software will do the rest. It will collect that information on, on speed test and we'll plot that on a map. And then the consultants will do the rest in terms of plotting that on the map. And then at the same time as they do that, they're going to load information. What we call GIS information, geographic information into the map showing where they, where that, where that. Speed test was taken, but also information like where is the fiber, how much is the cost to put the fiber in there? Topic graphic information, demographic information, all sorts of other information, what's been done in that area in the past. In terms of internet, internet and so forth. So that whenever that sixty weeks is finished. Then we can, we've got information on a map which we can then take and use to apply for some of this money that's out there. And we believe that this will be a great tool to try and apply for some of this money that's available for broadband, improving broadband connectivity. If you just turn this, onto the next slide, the third, third page there, Justin. We say forty thousand dollars is, is, is a steal really, two thousand eight hundred and fifty for every local member of our, of our, of our, of our region. And that's an annual subscription. What are the benefits that will bring to the, bring to the community? Well, it will demonstrate broadband speed at the street level, it'll show where improvements can be or needed. It will demonstrate the community view, the commissioners are committed to strengthening the connectivity. That will allow us to, to, to use this as a tool to, 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 to seek, seek some of the money through grant applications. The timeline on this, we hope to get this money together by the end of August. We hope to go out and get the consultants in September. We hope to do this mapping in the month of October into, into November and we hope to be able to go out and use it for grant applications. By the end of the year, going into the early part of twenty twenty two. So that's really very quickly, very quickly run through what we are hoping to do through this mapping project. And that, the last slide, I think is the, is the bubble, bubble diagram is what I call it. Mapping at the bottom should lead to grant applications, should lead to project funding, community projects, ultimately leading to improved both infrastructure. And ultimately improved broadband connectivity. There's no magic bullet to this, there's no magic bullet to this problem. It's gonna take. Struggle partnerships among all of us. I know you've been talking to the governor's office of science and innovation technology. The internet service providers are hard to work with, but I kind of help think that with all this money there. There's gonna be public, private partnerships that are gonna have to, gonna develop and we're. We're gonna solve it, as I said last night to, said last night to, to Heidi. It's been possible to make this work in states across, across, across the country. Southern Mississippi has been able to make this work. We can make it work in Nevada. And we're gonna do it by partnering, partnering together. It's possible to make this work. So I'm open to some questions. I don't have all the answers, but I'd be happy to take them. Appreciate your support. Justin, your comments?
So there, there have been, there have been new broadband mapping projects. What definitely he is proposing is a much more, more anywhere. Matt, which I think is excellent because he sends a spot level maps. If there's one address in that census block that. It's considered good, it's, everybody in that block is good. Which is just not the case. So I, I, I think that for community connectivity, that this, that definitely is. Going down the right. I would encourage the board to support their.
You have a question, Carl?
Yes, will this mapping include? The intermittent connections we have in Lower Valley and lack of connections we have in. Unionville and no connection in Dixie Valley?
Well, the, the map will depend, all depend on the number of people who take the speed tests. It's gonna be very dependent and therefore the map, the success of the map will depend on the outreach and getting people engaged to take the speed test. So that outreach won't cost the community anything. We will, W N D D will take responsibility for. That outreach, but we will need your help and, and letting people know. And we will give you the copy, we will give you the, the, whatever materials you need to get on your website or to get flyers made or whatever, but. We, we will depend on you to get that message out there, but we will help you with that process. The twenty eight hundred and fifty will obviously be the cost of, you know, paying the consultants, we will ask, ask you for that, but we will promote it. Whatever, whatever platforms you use, websites or whatever other platforms you have here, we would ask you to use those. We will give you the copy to get information out. So really it's dependent upon that, that collaboration with you to get the message.
So how will people report it to you? Will they be sending an email? Will there be a link or something or?
There'll be, there'll be a website to go to.
Because like in Dixie Valley, for instance, where there's nothing, they can't really do a speed test.
Then they'll have to come from the library and do their, then they're there and report, we don't have anything. There'll be a way for them to say, we don't have anything.
Okay. Okay, I have a question for you, Heidi. The funding that we're going to receive from the governor's office on economic development with the development of our. You know, with Humboldt County, can some of that funding be used towards this project?
You know, maybe, I haven't brought it. We don't have the money in hand yet.
No, I understand that, but we will be getting the money. I don't have any question in my mind that that's gonna happen. So I'm thinking that this directly is economic development.
As a, as a group, we haven't really talked about where, where we think our money's gonna go and what we're gonna use it for. I know that we do plan on having separation between the two city counties. And so, you know, there are some things that Jan and I do plan on using our funds for, but. I haven't wanted this and, and I don't wanna say no. Not, I don't say, yeah, maybe, this, this could definitely fall into that. I don't think it could fall into that category.
So we could go ahead and approve this and take it out of general government and then reclass it. Once your board meets and, and looks at it. No, I know, but, and it has to be recommended, you know, your budget from the proceedance, so.
Props Commissioner Shaq, I could, I could step in and just, just, I mean, I obviously can't say I haven't spent my money, but Persian County is getting our funding. From the state as well, so that's another possibility.
Right, no, I, I realize that, we just. Looking at other ways too, yes.
I think it's important to note that OSIT will not be doing the mapping at this time. And so this is our only option.
Yeah.
I think it's a great option. The mapping will have the task, I don't know how we did it, I don't know how to use it and it doesn't seem helpful. Probably because like Justin says, like one person says, yeah, I've got some massive quantities of internet connectivity that screws up the whole. Block, I don't know. So I'm looking forward to this. And I will add that the NTIA, NTIA map shows massive. Efficiencies all across the map.
Yeah, I just want to comment, appreciate what Justin says about the maps. There are maps, the FCC Federal Communications Commission and NTIA, another agency within the Department of Commerce. Not a lot of work on maps. And I get this pushback from other people saying, well, there are plenty of maps out there, why do you want to do more maps? And but as Justin said, they are woefully inaccurate and have not been, been getting good press. They are working on improving. And we can all sit back and wait for them to improve and some, 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 some states are doing that. Many other states, many other communities have said, we can't wait, we've gotta push ahead. And that's really our position for W N D D, we've gotta go ahead and do something, do something ourselves, so really that's our position and I appreciate it, Justin.
Dean, any comments or money?
Well, we have fourteen thousand budgeted in the general fund under economic development. And we just, in today's vouchers, I believe there's five thousand going to W N D D for the yearly. So there's money there that I would suggest this twenty eight fifty come in that area.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
Make the motion to. Two thousand eight, eight hundred and fifty dollars. To conduct our region wide broadband mapping project with W N D D.
And this is an annual.
And also. Amount in this, of the same?
Yeah. So, so I will go ahead and second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
But Heidi, I would ask your board if that's something that would work in your budget when you do it. And yeah, we have other sources, but.
Sheriff Jerry Allen. Come on up. We already talked about the salary resolution. And approved it effective July one.
Okay.
We can't go back. Because the last payroll was done for the last fiscal year.
Okay.
So what else you have to tell us?
The only update I have is we have ten inmates in the jail currently. I'm gonna be giving you the information for the gentleman that's gonna come work on our generator. Apparently. The photos you gave me were for the, not for the motor themselves, they were for the. Generator, or from the electronics portion, not the engine portion.
So it needs more information on the engine.
He tried to go up there yesterday, but. I told him it was locked and I would go up there with him and he just looked on its own, so I found out that, I guess it was locked.
Oh, I could have given Humboldt for that.
But he wants to, he wants to. And go up there, try to figure that out so that preventative means up there.
Okay.
So, other than that, I have three, three cadets in the academy that are still doing well. Three positions that are still open. We have two applicants for our front office position and two applicants for dispatch position. Zero applicants for our deputy, open deputy positions, so.
But you still have three open deputies.
Yeah, and one's still on medical leave and another with a different issue.
When will the others be out of post?
Not till, uh, right around Thanksgiving.
So you're down six people?
Effectively, I'm down eight people.
Well, because.
That's just sworn staff. I'm still down two civilian staff as well. So. So we're still, we're struggling.
You're just in, in motion normal.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. I don't think we'd know how to operate if we were.
I know.
I don't think this county would know how to operate if they're police staff.
So the only other thing, I guess there's supposed to be a one o'clock phone meeting, but I was just made aware of this morning regarding the Burning Man. Non-festival or whatever vernacular you want to use for that. There's still going to be thousands of people out there on the fire. There's going to be no services. Um, except for we'll have some law enforcement services out there, but other than that.
There is some discussion going on with BLM.
Yes.
On same thing, how to handle it.
Yeah, kind of like what we did last year. We might have a couple more people out there, but.
Yeah.
Other than that.
Right, even after the article released on the New York Post, really major news outlet in America about the unorganized Burning Man.
Yeah, you know, probably, you know, if I, if I do have to say something good about Burning Man, when they do organize it, it's, it's easy because it's set up like a city. If we have a call to respond to, there are landmarks we can go to. We can actually respond in a timely manner.
Yeah.
When there's, you know, thousands or hundreds of miles of desert out there. Somebody is able to call because there is a cell phone power out there. If somebody's able to get through and say, you know. We have a call, they either have to go off whatever GPS coordinates they have or. The landmark of, yeah, we're, you know, a quarter mile from the big mountain.
Yeah.
Now, there's only a few hundred of those.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Um, their landmarks are not necessarily the same as what the common landmarks are. So it's hard, it's going to be harder to respond to calls and provide those services and those kind of things, so. But.
How many people do you expect?
Do I expect? I expect there to probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand.
Ten to twenty thousand people.
We, we already have one camp, one camp alone that's upwards of thousand people already. That were monitored, so.
Already out there.
No, 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 they're, they're planning.
Their intention.
But the one camp is going to be a thousand people.
And see, there's no Sandy Huts provided. There's none of the things that Burning Man normally.
Yeah, there, there's no infrastructure.
Yeah.
But there will be, from what I've heard, there will be Burning Man. I don't want to say staff, but Burning Man employees that are actually going to be out there attending the non-festival. They won't be in their official capacity, but they'll be out there as well. I mean, it's public plans, so the public will be out there. So.
I think I've gotten two minister applications prior to where last year we had none.
Yeah.
So because no one is actually organizing this event. We can, we cannot impose the festival ordinance?
No, you can't. But you have to do it on those camps that are larger than whatever fits in the festival ordinance. So.
Which is what, a thousand or something or? I haven't looked at it either. And what they'll say is, no, there's just twenty of us. There's just thirty of us and we happen to all be here at the same time.
Yeah, that would be difficult for Jerry to try to.
Yeah, without, you know, you know, it's commandeering our own satellite and taking some high resolution photos and those kind of things. Yeah, we're gonna. Have a hard time with that.
It's like the Fourth of July. Is that what?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be a few thousand people out there for that too.
I have a question on that, kind of a legal question, I guess. Pershing County ambulance provides service to Pershing County. Pershing County Fire Department. Provides service to Pershing County. On a non-event like this, legally, if they call. And they have a fire or they need an emergency, the ambulance or something out there, are we obligated to go?
Do you normally go to federal land?
Yeah, we go, we'll, we would just run a fire out to Sulphur here.
Because it would be the same.
You know.
So we, uh, so our response time is going to be.
Oh, yeah.
Very quick. And from what I understand, Gerlach's, uh, urgency service is shutting down there, so you're looking at Washington County. So.
Gerlach is shutting down that fire station?
From what I understand, they're in the process though.
Permanently or temporarily or what?
I have, I have.
There again, it's a Washoe County.
I don't know, what are you doing? We, I mean, in, in Grass Valley, we provide service for them, but we have fire and then we have actual agreement with Humboldt County to take care of EMS there. Are we responsible for EMS there?
Do you respond on federal land for the ambulance?
We respond on all of Pershing County.
Yeah, so then, yes.
Well, then maybe that brings up that maybe we should have an agreement with Lyon County to cover stuff like this if it's.
Washoe.
It would be Washoe.
Washoe.
Not that way.
It'd be Washoe.
Well, wouldn't firmly be closer than?
No, Gerlach's the most, the closest and it's three mile or.
If, if it's still open though.
From the, where the festival would be and that's in Washoe County. Yeah, Washoe County on the south end.
The easy, the easy answer, the easy answer, Mr. Wilcox, is these are campers.
Is what?
These are campers or hunters, just like somebody in Dixie Valley. Or on the fringes of the county. If there was an accident, somebody's deer came. Like he would respond, he'd respond.
No, we would respond out there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And if they bleed to death before you get there, that is a logistical. Problem that we. Are not equipped to solve, but that's what happens when you're in a rural county that's the size of New England.
And then there's a major event, then emergency management gets in and then go that way.
Right, but this isn't a major event. This is.
A major disaster, something big happen.
The MCI, mad, mad, mad incident or something like that.
I mean, you would, you would respond according to your protocol, but that's. That's, that's what this situation is, is a bunch of individuals going camping. I don't like the answer, but that's.
I know, but you're right. It's just they're all going camping. It, it just happened to be at the same spot.
I know, I, I kind of remember the Area Fifty One thing where they had all the, the thing going on there. They had to provide services for the. Those people out there who were going to that event. Actually, it wasn't an event. But they still took their medical. I know like puts an ambulance out there and it was.
There's a ten o'clock.
I know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know. We will respond, but thanks all.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let's see, have any other question? That's, that's our concern for the next coming months, so.
Yeah.
Not that far away.
We'll shall see.
Oh, no, it'll be here before we know it.
Yeah. James, is yours easier?
Thank you.
Is yours easier?
Oh, okay, that's what I wanted to be sure of, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have some.
Okay.
Um, there won't be, we won't have a planning commission meeting tonight, but there will be one in September. And we've got a couple of things for, for that agenda. Water. Just pulled the, did a sample yesterday, took it to Reno, red meters. Next month is, we'll do our, our annual, the, the bigger samples for. For the uranium and. Few others.
Mr. Duffy's putting in a generator for his house. He's tired of being without.
Actually, there's been, there's been quite a few of those that people have been doing.
Yeah.
We've been, we've been keeping busy. I'm along the, the, the water. I, I told Shayla already, but. Rusty had, he put some. Some gauges on, on our hydrants. And he put one upstream and one, one upstream, one downstream. And ahead of our, our pressure gauges and below our pressure gauges. And above our pressure gauges, there, there is virtually no fluctuation in. And in pressure, when, when, when the pump, regardless of where the pump kicks on or not. Um, and there's, um, they've checked for whether the pump is sucking air or cavitating. There, there, there doesn't be any indication of that, so that rules out that. A road and highway pulling, the amount of water that they're pulling is pulling our water to down. So there, there, there's water over the pump. We're not getting air into our system right there. Now below, below our regulators, he put one right down by the hydrant, just by Brenda's house. And on, this was a couple of weeks ago on Saturday and on Sunday. Um, you could see, um, you, you could see big pressure fluctuations going, going down and then spiking at about ninety. Right around ninety pounds. Um, which is, which, which is no good.
What's, what's the low side going to?
Um, it, it spiked at about ninety.
No, the low side.
Um, the low side is down to probably, I think it goes down to like twenty pounds or less.
It does.
Um, and, and that is indicative of somebody in the system, um, opening and closing a hydrant. Too fast. And causing water.
Yeah.
A fire hydrant?
Well, they can. If you close them too fast, the body is gone, but.
They, they created.
And they, they'll do an excess pressure.
The, the engineer made a, a good analogy. He said, when you open up a hydrant, all the water in your system is running to the hydrant at the speed of a freight truck.
Yeah.
And if you, i- i- if you close it too fast. It, it's the equivalent of a, of a train, like everything, the, the waters slamming into the, in, into the thing and then it's backing up, causing.
Yeah.
And it, it causes water hammer, pressure spikes and all sorts of bad stuff that's not good.
It actually can blow things apart.
So that, that could be why, um, the line going across that, that. The line that the water district fixed, the one that was a six inch. Um, because it wasn't a break, it was a wall.
Yeah.
So that could be what was happening, happened to that too.
So have you communicated with Jerry Monroe, the fire department? Because they're the only ones that would be opening a fire hydrant.
They, they are, but actually anybody that has a, that has a key or a wrench or anything like that can, can open and close those things. We've had, there are in some instances several years ago where, um, people living off grid, they just. Hook up to a hydrant, open it up, fill up their, their water tanks and close it in the way they go. So, and, and on those particular days, they, they, they wouldn't be, and, and Jerry knows, Jerry and his, and his crew know to, when they open them, they close them.
So it's not the fire department, then it's somebody else.
It, it is somebody else. It should take about two minutes to shut down a height.
You know, a town that size, you just wonder that somebody else around would, would see somebody operating a fire hydrant.
And you would think.
Yeah, you would think so.
Yeah. But that's, that, that's what is, the, the information is telling so far.
That could be as simple as a water truck. Somebody trying to build water and not knowing what they're doing.
Yeah, oh, oh, absolutely, but yeah.
I didn't know you could do that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you, yeah, you open up and close a fire hydrant too fast and it.
No, but I meant that anybody could open.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if you have a, you, you could do it with a, with a pipe wrench.
I have, I have a fire hydrant in my house.
Well, of course you do.
Of course I do.
Yeah, so, yeah, anybody can open. I mean. We could buy locks and put on them, but that could be troublesome. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Something, something happened with one of those locks.
Oh, man.
So have you communicated that to Brenda?
Um, we've tried to get ahold of her, um, but. She hasn't gotten back to Rusty or I.
Okay.
And she hasn't called, so.
Because they need to kind of be watching and we got to figure out who's doing this.
Yeah, when, when she experiences low pressure, then get out and look around.
Yeah.
Well, thank you though, that.
So, so far that's where we're, where we're, okay, I mean, we're. It's a possible indication where it could be happening. Um, I am. Signed up for the, it's a commercial building inspector course, um, in, in Las Vegas on, in September, the thirteenth of the seventeenth, so I'm going.
Want you to sign up for two courses, two?
No, it, it's a, it, it, the commercial. The, it's just one, the commercial building inspector, but I have to bring two manuals, the IBC and it's a, uh. It's a concrete. So have that and. I'm hoping, um, I just talked to Jeff from the road department this morning. I, I'm hoping I might be able to get my truck over sometime this month. And Cassell will be out. Toward the end of the month or I think three or four days, they're going to be out for, for training for Cassell system. So hopefully.
For what?
Cassell, so we can, for our utility billing and business license stuff, so hopefully we, oh, we can have that system up and going.
Okay.
Relatively.
Okay.
Did we ever? Nevermind, I have to, I'll, I'll think on it.
So on that correspondence that we received from the individual, are you, um, communicating back to them or? The one I just handed.
No, I, I, I haven't, he didn't email this to me.
No, but I mean, you said you were aware of it.
Yeah, um, actually Bryce came over last week, um, because I think he had talked to Larry and then Shayla came over yesterday. But, or Monday, yeah, I'm sorry. But I don't, I don't have an issue. I, I've made a list of five, five different.
Oh, okay.
Um, contractors that if they, they want to use.
That we would allow to do work if, if there's a request.
You, well, yeah, it's going to be up to the county and whether they want.
That's what I'm saying.
If, if you guys want different people, different contractors working on. Installing in the, in the system.
I mean. Johnny electrician down the street. Cannot do every work, all the work like that.
Right, no.
And you know that.
They would have to have some sort of certification, high voltage.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I am aware of that part, but the ones I put together, there are a couple of commercial. Um, they're commercial electricians, but before they do the work, the customer would have to know that they, that whoever they have as an electrician would have to be qualified to work in.
So you did make a list of five?
Yeah.
Would you send that to me, please?
Yeah. And one, one of them is, is, uh. Is, two of them are, are people that have done work on our system.
By par?
Uh, no, not par. It's a. Um, CR Drake, they've done. And, and, and BSL.
Okay.
And then there's one out of Fallon and one out of Sparks.
Did you not put a par electric on there?
Um, no, I didn't.
It, it should be on there too.
For, for residential install.
Heck, yes.
Okay.
They, I mean, they do it all, uh, so at least have them on the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Perfect. If you'd send me that.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
I get calls from Humboldt River Ranch Board.
Well, and, and it's been, it, since I've been there and even, even before I was there, that. It, it, it's been the person, whether, and whether they liked it or not, it's been the person, whoever the county chose, like CR Drake. If they didn't like the quote from CR Drake, they didn't have a choice, but do you see our? So, I mean, it. It, it's been that way.
Yeah.
Forever, and you know, they, they don't like a quote from the person that the county chooses. Then. I. So it, it's not, I, I don't have a doubt, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, if they want to choose somebody else and they can get a better quote, then that's, that, that's good for them.
Yeah.
And they can do that. I guess I'm, I'm trying to get clarification here. Do we require just? That they go through one contractor now? Or can they use anyone who has a commercial?
It, it, it has been, since I've been there and before I was there, that it's been one contract.
Okay.
Um, it, it, before BSL, it was always.
It was always CR.
It was always CR Drake and that, and that was their only choice.
So then now are we saying that we'll, we'll look at it and approve additional contractors? Is that what you're?
We want to look at it because, because like I say, it can't be just anybody, electrician down the street. There's got to be somebody that knows what they're doing.
So we could put on our next agenda to approve a list of, of contractors to work on the system.
Or do you just have the list available?
I'm asking.
I'm asking. I think probably just having the list.
I think you just have the list.
And and then and then before the work is done, I would just have to make sure that they are actually.
Sure.
Exactly. It doesn't need to be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So are you going to communicate that back or have you already to that individual?
Uh, no, I haven't. I haven't communicated back to my sister. I I I haven't. I I've seen this email by.
Right.
By Shayla.
Yeah.
So I um.
But we need to get back to that individual to let them know what they can do.
There's actually two in two different ones.
Other.
Yes.
Okay.
Right. So we.
Different ones, what? Two individuals?
Two individual people trying to build a house.
Oh. And the reason I'm not really in this discussion is because.
Yes. It's the conflict of interest. Um, so James, so you will communicate back to that individual with a list of approvals? And I don't know if the ones that you've already.
Well, if he has one, if he has somebody that's not on the list, he 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 can give it to me and then I'll have to check.
And I I didn't bring it with me, but at the other one, you had contact with two, but I can't remember the name.
Um, yeah, whomever. So if that if if that's the route we want to go, then then so yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter.
Do we need to put that on an agenda to actually approve?
I believe you would.
Yes, I think so.
And also, I think for the the record, we probably ought to know that Commissioner Hudson has accused herself from this agenda item.
Yeah, for this discussion. I have another copy here. Ooh, somewhere I will get it to you. Um, anyway, so if you could get with Karen so we can get that on the agenda for next time, so that we can actually do approval.
Well, and. And I get what you're saying about do you approve only only these ones?
No, but we could have a line on there that says any com- any licensed commercial. Her um, contractor that that is approved by planning can can.
Basically, it just has to say that it has to be approved by the planning department and they have to hold these licenses.
Right.
And that's all it needs to say.
And that's. It needs to be approved by you. It doesn't need to be approved by this board.
No.
So just do your thing with your list.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, no, I I don't have anything else. Not like you guys do.
Um, I will send that to you, I see. I just have a printed copy like. Okay.
Okay. So we have a ten thirty, but we have a number twelve is USDA. We have a letter in the packet. Uh, Natural Resource Conservation Services requests for Persian County to become a cooperating agency in the planning and development of the lower Humboldt watershed, Persian County.
Is this the the this is the USDA? The USGS is the one that did the mapping that is going to take a year or so to be submitted, correct?
I'm sorry.
The USGS is the other mapping entity, right? That was.
Yeah, this isn't USGS.
I know, but it's a different entity, right?
This is uh, my understanding uh, is the NRCS. Planning portion of the lower Humboldt watershed, which is eight hundred and thirty seven thousand for the planning. And that's all that's been approved. And then the design is one point seven six four million. And the construction is estimated to be at eighteen million, but neither one of those have been approved. So they're going to spend eight hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars just to look at the situation.
And all we're being asked to do is be a cooperating agency, uh, period.
That means that we're involved and we can comment.
There's nothing in here about money or anything like that. It actually says subject a request for the chair of the commissioners to be. Uh, a co- cooperative agency. And that's what we're trying to do, just just to be a cooperating agency.
So I don't see a problem with that if there's no money involved and that way we are included in any conversation or.
Exactly.
Anything that they bring up. So um, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve this request. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I.
I motion.
So I have a question. You are being denied that's entering into an informal agreement for an MOU. Finding that informal or MOU.
Yeah, I see that. So.
What's the difference, counsel?
There'll be another document that has to be.
Approved, yeah. But does that limit our involvement, not having an MOU or anything?
Apologize. I'm looking into the statutes.
And does one cost money when the other one doesn't?
Informals? Formal?
So an MOU? So do you want to amend your motion to do a a formal MOU?
Your motion.
Did I make the motion? I will amend my motion. I don't remember. Um, no, I do. Um, I will amend my motion to um, include that we proceed with a formal MOU.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the hand.
I.
I motion. Do you need much time to uh, prepare for Zach's?
Uh, Mr. Conan, it's online. I have this presentation queued and ready to go, so unless I'm already going, I must seem some time to set up.
We only have a couple of minutes. I'm going to go get some more water.
Carl, I have a question.
I'd say we're in recess.
Oh, you're ready? So we have a uh.
Are we coming down to recess?
Yes. Oh, I didn't go into recess. I just wanted to get water.
Shayla did.
Thank you. So we have a uh, a ten thirty timed event, excuse me, with Nevada State Treasurer. And he's going to shed some light on some care funding. Justin is working frantically to bring it up.
Hello, how is everybody today?
There we go.
Hey, perfect. You can hear me?
Yep.
Excellent. Uh, well, thanks so much for having me. I'm Zach Conan. I'm your Nevada State Treasurer. Good to see some of you again, meet some of you for the first time. Um, I believe we have a PowerPoint. Which uh. I think they'll put up in a moment. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, excellent. Um, again, thanks so much for having us today. Uh, I'm Zach Conan, your Nevada State Treasurer. It was really important for the governor and I, as we work through the process of uh, spending and investing these dollars from the American Rescue Plan to make sure we reached out. To all the cities and counties who are receiving money directly, uh, and let us know both what our plans are at the state level in ways uh, potentially we can um, collaborate. And make these dollars more effective. So I appreciate your time and we'll dive right in. If we could switch the slide. Okay, so we have an unprecedented opportunity to create the Nevada we deserve. Uh, the governor and I and legislative leadership put out something called the Every Nevadan Recovery Framework towards the end of the legislative session. And the goal there was to effectively put a sandbox around what these dollars are uh, and what they could potentially do. Our hope through this process is to create the most collaborative, transparent and effective spend and investment of those dollars that we see in the past. And let's be frank, uh, we don't often coordinate as often as we should uh, between the counties and the state uh, and the cities. And this is one of our attempts to make that process a little bit more effective uh, as we go through these dollars. Next slide, please. A little bit of background, HR thirteen nineteen, which is the American Rescue Plan, uh, signed by the president on March eleventh. Put out almost two trillion dollars in aid, crossed a hundred and three separate programs. Uh, and that aid, of course, is going directly to uh, the counties, the cities, folks like Persian County, of course, uh, as well as uh, what came in directly to the state. Now, as of uh, the end of July, we've identified funding for sixty two of the hundred programs. Since this was updated, we've found uh, three more programs. So there's a hundred and three different buckets of money uh, coming into the states and counties. Next slide, please. So Nevada's share uh, of that money is about six point seven billion dollars. And the point of this slide is to show the two buckets that I think we're most familiar with, which is the red bucket on the bottom, that two point seven billion dollars that we were wired on June fourth. As well as the almost a little bit over one billion dollars of local aid, uh, some of which uh, should have made its way by now to Pershing County. Uh, but is also going to other counties and cities around the state. Some of that money in that second bucket is trunched, half will have been received and half will be received later. Um, but the other point is to showcase the top part of that pie chart, which includes two hundred and twenty three million dollars for healthcare, ninety two million dollars for economic development. More than a billion dollars uh, for K through twelve, two hundred million dollars for higher education, uh, twenty three million dollars for food assistance. Almost four hundred million dollars for family assistance and the rest. And this is the conundrum. This is the work that's in front of us. To make sure that we're spending those dollars in the most effective way possible. We'll talk about what some of those dollars are. Next slide, please. The aid comes in basically three buckets, and this doesn't include the money that came directly to um, to programs uh, that you might have heard about, like the federal pandemic unemployment compensation. The additional three hundred dollars a week um, for folks on unemployment that runs out uh, in about a month from today. Uh, it doesn't include the direct stimulus payments, doesn't include the child tax care credits uh, or the money that went in to buy down uh, the cost of health insurance on the exchange. Uh, this is just that six point seven billion dollars. It falls into three types. Non-discretionary, quasi-discretionary and discretionary. They are what they sound like they are. Uh, non-discretionary is simply plus ups into existing programs, um, some programs that Nevada doesn't have, so we might need to start those up in order to take advantage of this federal funding. Um, some is quasi-discretionary, things like rental assistance where the money has to be spent for rental assistance, but we have some amount of control. As to whether or not, for instance, in Nevada, we chose to give that money directly to landlords as opposed to paying it to the tenant and then direct. Uh, and then from the tenant to the landlord. We have some control over those dollars and then discretionary aid. Uh, and that's the state and local aid and the capital projects fund. Next slide, please. Now, the reason I talk about the different types of programs uh, is as we start looking towards prioritization, we realize that some of the goals. Uh, that we have at the state level and expect to have at the county level from a social service perspective uh, are covered by this framework. And we want to make sure um, at least on the state level, this is kind of where our priorities lie. First, Nevada's basic needs and then community, economy and quality of life. So think about it as starting from, you can't see my hands, but. Starting kind of close together into the person and then expanding out into the community, things like education. And then into the economy and then quality of life. And we talk about quality of life, we're talking about fixing long-term systemic problems. Things like our unemployment system, right, which we know uh, we need to replace the DMV system, other things that affect how uh, citizens um, interact with their government, things that could be better. We've also laid out seven priorities for strategic enhancement. If these seem broad, uh, they're intended to be, right? So we had to pass a a bill during legislative session, uh, SB four sixty one, uh, which created some priorities to allow this uh, this money to flow through effectively. But I think you'll see there that we're talking about things like strengthening public education, investing in infrastructure, modernizing, enhancing government services, strengthening Nevada's workforce, supporting small businesses and revitalizing the economy. Um, probably nothing on there that's overly surprising as a priority. Next slide, please. So here's the timeline and kind of how we're going through this process. Now. I I spoke a little bit earlier about the the size of the funds, um, but one of the pieces of direction from the treasury and the White House, and they've been pretty consistent here. Is that they want an intentional process. They want a process where we're saying, okay, here's what the uh, the residents of Nevada told us they wanted to do. Here's the plan that we've put together in order to do those things. Here's what we expect success looks like, uh, and here's what actually happened. And uh, if you could go to the next slide, please, or the next button. Thank you. Um, so step one is a statewide listening tour. The governor and I kicked that off yesterday down here in Las Vegas. Um, to collect stakeholder input and community feedback as to the effects of the pandemic and what programs and services would aid best. And these are, uh, this is feedback we're trying to get in two different ways, both direct ideas. So on our website, nevadarecoveries.com, um, you'll be able to find a place to submit a specific idea. Here is something I need in my community, a problem that we have in a way um, that we think we can fix it. We also have a generic uh, or more general survey, and that's to figure out where Nevada's priorities lie. Should we spend uh, more money on, say, small business or more money on education? More money on uh, food insecurity or more money on housing, right? And we're trying to get kind of a smell test of where uh, different parts of the state want to make sure we spend those funds. So that tour is seventy five days. Uh, we'll be up in Persian County uh, sometime in the next month. Um, and we're looking forward to being there. We're also uh, looking forward to meeting all of you in person. After we do that tour and pull that information in over the next seventy five days, next uh, button, please. Move on to step two, which is where we take the listening tour input and we collect it and summarize it and do a comprehensive roadmap. This becomes really important because of the complexity of those dollars I spoke to before. So again, we've identified a hundred and three buckets representing about six point seven billion. It's two point seven billion that's come directly into the state, one point one or so that will go to the cities and counties. That means there's two point nine billion in those other hundred and one buckets. Each one of them has their own rules, their own programmatic restrictions, their own timelines and the rest. Uh, best metaphor I can give is imagine you had two uh, pockets full of cash and a hundred and one gift cards. You want to make real sure you spent the gift cards before you spent the cash, right? Because the cash is obviously a lot less restrictive and that's how these programs are set up. So we're going to take in all those ideas that we've gotten on the road. We've gotten hundreds so far. I expect we'll have thousands by the end of the process. And we'll split them into subject matter areas, uh, infrastructure, K through twelve, higher education, uh, job retraining, small business support, et cetera. Um, and we'll put stakeholder groups together to talk through each. And we'll put stakeholder groups together to talk through each of those buckets, right? So within a subject matter area, they'll go through the ideas, provide resources to ones that are a little less baked, right? Because we know we're going to get feedback from the community that says, I need more healthcare in my community, right? But they don't know that the best way to do that might be through funding the creation of a federally qualified health center that has long-term revenues from the federal government. We don't expect them to know that. We want to make sure that they've got experts and subject matter experts and and folks from the state and outside folks to help make sure that they can actually flesh out that idea. We're also going to be connecting those ideas to buckets of funds. This gets back to those 103 buckets, making sure that whatever the idea is, has funding available to it and that we're funding the most restrictive things first, using the most restrictive capital, right? Again, trying to make sure that we have the flexible capital for things where we need to be a bit more flexible. After that process happens, next step, please. Then we implement. So the state works through designing, creating new programs and services that are going to be funded through this ARP process. All of this happens over the next, call it 12 to 18 months. The federal money, just to scope it again for you, for the most part, needs to be allocated by December 31st, 2024. It needs to be spent by December 31st, 2026. And again, the the guidance from Treasury and the White House is pretty clear that they want this to be a long intentional process, unless the need for something is so clear and direct that you don't need to go talk to a lot of folks in order to figure out. The best example I give there again is is the Dieter system, right? So legislature passed a bill during the last session to replace our unemployment insurance system is deeply needed. And I don't think we're going to be able to find a single person in Nevada who doesn't think that's a good use of money. Next slide, please. Okay, here's why we're doing this. It informs spending priorities by hearing from those who've been hit hardest by the pandemic. And that means when we say every Nevada and recovery framework, we really mean every Nevada. And that's why I'm so grateful that y'all let me bend your ear a little bit today and we'll be out in Pershing County to talk to folks. We want to find out exactly what the most effective way to solve these problems is. And we know we're not going to be able to do that from a conference room in Carson City, right? Or down here in Las Vegas. Number two, it allows the local governments and the state to coordinate, so as not to duplicate efforts and instead ensures that every dollar spent is maximized. This is a big one. We found during the CRF dollars, the CARES Act funding that came out in 2020, there were times where we overlapped our efforts, right? There would be a small business support program from, say, NACO and a small business support program from the state and other counties, and that created some confusion in the marketplace. Now, I want to be clear, you all control the money that's come into Pershing County. That is not, we have no control over it, nor do we want any control over. But what we do want is some collaboration. So we make sure that if there's something you're trying to do that the state can support, that we're here to support you. If, for instance, let's say broadband was a high priority for Pershing County and the dollars that you're getting in, we would suggest that perhaps we all coordinate on the state's plan to fix broadband in every one of our 17 counties so that your dollars can go farther towards that effort, right? And we don't do the same thing twice. Finally, it provides an opportunity to capture ideas and issues that may be unallowed under guidance, but eligible for funding through other programs. We have, that $6.7 billion represents more money than the state's ever gotten at one time. But there are other buckets. The governor in his budget and legislature funded our state infrastructure bank, which now is $75 million to spend on building infrastructure projects around the state and will soon have more. There are dollars coming in through a potential American jobs package, an infrastructure bill that you might have heard about that could be used. We also general fund spending in the future. A lot of times we found that good ideas don't go farther than the idea stage because we don't have the resources to figure out what exactly they'd be. We know we don't have money, for instance, to pay for XYZ. And so we never do the work to determine what exactly XYZ could be. In this case, we do have the money to determine what XYZ could be, and we want to do that through this process so that we have a list of things, even if they aren't eligible. Once we get the final guidance and as those rules kind of solidify, we still know what the project is, and it is both shovel-ready and shovel-worthy for future capital. Next slide, please. We've got a community engagement vendor, one of the things, and that suggests this on your end too, if need be, that is allowable and suggested under guidance is bringing on additional resources if needed to spend this capital effectively. Like I said, the the tour kicked off yesterday. We'll go through the end of October. We doing meetings and listening sessions broken down by geography, community groups, you know, church groups, union halls, et cetera, rotaries, economic development groups and around the seven priorities. So we'll have meetings that are about housing. We'll have meetings that are about food insecurity, et cetera. Next slide, please. Things to remember. We need your input. Tell us what you and your community needs and how you would fix it. There's a public and community feedback form. All ideas go through this form, and I can't be more specific than that. No ideas are going to get funded that don't start through a form at the state level. This is both the transparency required by the federal government as a condition of taking this money. And it also allows us to make sure that we're being accountable, right? So that folks can see where did an idea come from, how did that idea grow and why did it end up getting funded? Our suggestion is to don't self-censor. That one bucket, the $2.7 billion, is 150-page interim final rule and about 40 pages of FAQs that have changed about 12 times since they were first released on May 17th. The rules and restrictions are ever-changing. They are too much for one person or one small group of people to get their hands around. That's why we're bringing in additional help in order to do that work. If there is an idea or a thing that you need, tell us and we'll figure it out, which bucket makes the most sense. Share the message with your friends, family and neighbors. Obviously, you all know folks and the folks that are watching all know folks who need help. Ask them what help they need. Get them to fill out the form. The more information we get, the better off we're going to be. And finally, as always, please don't hesitate to ask questions. This is a new and confusing process. None of us have been through it before. Hopefully, frankly, none of us will have to go through it again, right? But I think we have a real opportunity here to help and we have a real opportunity to collaborate and try to make things better for all of your residents and all the people in the state. Next slide, please. Here's a couple of resources, in case you need them, and my contact information. Next slide, please. And that's it. If we can go back to the camera, happy to take any questions. Really appreciate all of your time.
Question. There are several needs that the county has that there's no way we have funding for, even with the the funds that we're going to receive, you know, as our portion. So how do we submit that to you? Like, for instance, we need a bridge replaced that we've been after NDOT to do for a long time. We want to make sure that that gets completed. We need a road in our Grass Valley community be repaved. That's going to cost us millions of dollars that we do not have. We need help with broadband too, even though there are some money. So how do we communicate that to you?
Everything goes through, yeah, everything goes through the form. So that's the best way to do it, right? And then that way we have a comprehensive list of what the needs of our communities are and we can make sure that those get funded, right? I mean, I think the, you know, or are part of the conversation around funding. Because remember, we might not be able to replace a road using these dollars. But we might be able to replace a road using the American Jobs Plan dollars that are coming down the road. We might be able to replace a road using the state infrastructure bank. There's, there's 10 different ways we could potentially do a thing. What we're trying to do is get a real collaborative and inclusive list of what the need is so that when funds become available, we can allocate them appropriately and quickly.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we have, the county's made a priority list. I guess you could call it our wish list. And then, I mean, you just indicated that release of funding isn't for quite some time. We need to do some planning for these projects. One is, I call it an emergency one, which is a water line to our airport. In order to order pipe, we have to have some idea. When are we going to have funding? If it's 2024, I mean, how do you cope with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's part of the process, right? So if there is something that needs to be done more quickly than these dollars come out, I think that's a worthwhile thing to include in the framework. Functionally, we have to collect information from everyone else at the state level before allocations start to get made, right? Because otherwise, the folks who end up getting the money are the folks who can turn in the things more quickly. And that's not necessarily fair or necessarily in the best interest of the state, right? So I do think that funds are going to flow prior to 2024. I expect a majority of funding decisions will happen in calendar 2022, right? But that's, we have more time to spend the money and the intention is to spend the money over a longer period of time, right? That is the, the federal intention behind these dollars. Now, with that said, there's also the state infrastructure bank, which will be funding projects in 2022. There's also the American Jobs Plan, which is going to have some dollars come into the state and go through a similar program. My best advice for any program, for any community, is to submit it as soon as possible with as much information as you have, right? And then as we start working through the different funding rounds, we'll be able to approve projects kind of on a rolling basis. But I do want to set expectations correctly. We won't be sponsoring one-off projects anywhere unless they have some sort of immediate health need, right? So, you know, Vax Nevada Days was something that got sponsored right away because there was an immediate health need to try and get folks vaccinated. If there was something else on the health response side, I expect that would get funded pretty quick. But economic development type programs are going to get funded more slowly because we have to look at the entire picture of the state.
Well, broadband's a real issue out here. And if we go into another lockdown, we're in the same boat we were in last year with education and everything.
Yeah, no, we know broadband is something we need to fix statewide. I expect the broadband solution ends up being a statewide solution as opposed to individual communities trying to sort it out. It's a much, it will be more effective from a capital perspective, right? And the state has a plan through OSIT, which is the Office of Science and Information Technology, I believe, but don't quote me on that acronym, to fix broadband statewide. We're looking at the different sources of funding we have right now and how quickly that can be executed.
Well, so what I'm hearing is we have this list that it's nice to have a list, but we're not going to do any of it anytime soon.
Well, that's the county.
I know.
He's talking about the state.
Yeah, so we can start some of that.
Yeah, and certainly remember, we don't have any control over the county dollars. We want to make sure we're not duplicative, right? So if you're going to spend money on a water project, for instance, we would want to make sure we also don't plan to spend money on that water project, right? We want to make sure we don't double dip unintentionally. But we don't control your funding at all. If there's a project you want to do right away with yours, should.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
A bucket of cash and he's got the gift cards.
Yeah.
Right.
So thank you very much. We'll see you on Tuesday. You're going to be here Tuesday in Pershing County.
Good. Looking forward to seeing you all in person. And of course, don't hesitate to reach out. And Chairman, you know, our hope is to get, is to be as effective as we can here, right? So if there's something that is more urgent and you want to make the case for something to be more urgent and spent kind of out of cycle, certainly make it, right? But I can tell you, every other community is making that same case. So we're going to move as quickly as we can. But we want to make sure that we, you know, do it fairly.
Okay.
Have a great day.
You too.
Okay, we have, before we get into a discussion there, we have one agenda item that we've overlooked, not overlooked, just haven't gotten to number 13, but Todd tells me he doesn't have the ordinance. So we'll wait that until next meeting. So now we're back to care funding.
Well, actually, that should be changed now to ARP funding because, American Rescue Plan, because the CARES funding is finished. And, you know, that's where we are.
Yeah.
But you, I'm sorry, Lacey, you don't know if we've received the funds, any funding. Yeah, so we're not, we're not sure. Yeah, this, the city got theirs, but theirs comes from the state.
They did receive some?
They got, I think he said 800,000. But they come from the state because of the way they're structured. So I'm going to have to find out where our money is and why we haven't got it. But anyway.
That one.
Oh, ordinance until next week. Thank you. Thank you. I, my staff was looking feverishly and we could couldn't locate anything, so.
So you can ask the city now that since they have 80,000.
Yeah, yeah, we can ask. Okay. Approval of amended agreement between the state of Nevada and local government to allocate potential settlement funds derived from litigation concerning opioid epidemic in Nevada.
I don't think we've gotten that.
No, you haven't known anything about that, Todd. He's digging.
Digging, yeah.
I know the last time Bryce and he was waiting for it from the state, so they may not have sent it yet.
And I believe actually, I spoke with Bryce about that last night. And that's actually still the status on that.
So I have to put it on the
Yeah, because I know that he he's a very, he's an integral part, I think he might be the world representative, the world district attorney representative for the opioid settlement.
Okay, litigation. Wait till Bryce comes back.
We, yeah.
Report from legal counsel. Report from administrative assistant. And here's items for future agendas. We have a couple we talked about today.
I have a suggestion before you go on. At our next meeting, we talked about having talking about the recommendation from the committee, the Subcommittee on Emergency Services. I personally, I would like us to have a workshop or meeting prior to that where we actually go through their recommendations, look at their tabs and, and ask any questions we have so that we can come on that day and and make a decision. Otherwise, we'll end up postponing it or something. So that's my thought. And I don't know when, when everybody's available.
You know, we have the report out today.
Yes.
And there are some tabs apparently that we have not seen. We don't have those. Whether, I don't know how long before we see the whole package.
Well, they should have the tabs now. We just didn't get them, with things.
That's what I said. I don't know how long before we'll see that.
But I didn't know.
Well, that we should wait and talk to the district attorney and see what he thinks about doing a workshop for further discussion.
Okay, but I would like to see us do it before the meeting where we're making any decisions. So will you talk to Bryce about?
I will.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, on our last agenda, I had about painting the barriers on the road going towards the, the bridge going towards the rodeo grounds. But no action was taken and there really wasn't a discussion. I just want to know if there's any interest in doing that or not. And if there's not, I mean, we can put it on the agenda. But if there's no, no interest in it, there's no point in putting it on the agenda. I think it looks like crap.
It's not the only end.
No, but they can paint it if we provide them a letter that says we're requesting it.
The issue with NDOT out here is that we are forgotten. I mean, it stops it firmly. And
Picks up again at Winnebago.
And
Well, kind of not forgotten. They just redid how many streets here. So there's some, some stuff here. Well, kind of not forgotten. They just redid how many streets here, so there's been some, some stuff here.
But I just want to know whether I should put that on, ask that be put on the agenda or not.
I don't think so.
Okay.
You know, he says a letter asking them to tell us about the G twenty-nine bridge. And you know where that went.
Well, this, this particular letter goes to Will Barter Supervisor, and then he instructs Will to go ahead. And Will is all, Will Barter is all willing to do this. He just wanted us to go through proper channels. So I would like to see it done, but again.
We can send one.
Well, we send one on the G twenty-nine bridge again. Did you actually send? Okay, so I'm going to ask that we put this on the agenda again about painting the barriers at least and then go from there. That was what I had.
Did you have any correspondence?
We could, we could go back to thirteen if you guys would like.
Oh, you do have the ordinance?
Yeah.
We do have an ordinance. We're doing a first meeting.
So.
So if you have it, I'll go ahead and introduce the first reading of the ordinance amending ordinance three forty-nine relating to the landfill assessment to make its effective date July first, twenty twenty-two rather than July first, twenty twenty-one. Is there a number? Three fifty.
What is that?
Three fifty, three five oh. And that doesn't mean. Thank you.
As a matter of reading, all other, other, all other sections of the thirteen dot zero six zero, zero one zero through. So just read the, I'm reading that out of the session. Am I just reading the title of the actual subsection? So basis assessment rate.
So you, I know you, you have that.
Not yet, no.
No, they don't have it. So actually, I'm just.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll look at it again at the next meeting.
Oh, okay, so I'll take back my first reading.
Yeah. So I have the ordinance. I don't have a revised ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll just air it on the side of caution.
We have eleven fifteen, but we can go board member reports for that. Shayla?
Well, you got the updates from Giselle and Heidi. I have a central Nevada water meeting on the one again, I think, so twentieth of fall. The meeting on the twentieth, that may be the Navy.
Yeah, the thirtieth is the Navy.
Yeah, and then we might we probably need to ask Robert to come up here and explain where the Navy wants to put the road to all of us.
I'd like to hear it.
So I will email him that and get him on the next agenda. He was going to meet with Bryce and myself, but we could never get a date together. The, here's with that expansion, it's meetings are a nightmare. I will, I, I would like to hope that our first next meeting is supposed to be in person. I would like to wish that things are better that way, but I'm not real optimistic.
People aren't participating.
The tribes, the tribes are not. And then there are a few people that are representing tribes that no matter what is said or done, they're never going to agree to anything. It's like banging my head against a wall. And I can only, I can only, only imagine.
Yeah.
So we'll see. Oh, I did get an email. Carl, did you see that? It was from Jeff Fontaine and they were let's see, they were going to protest.
The water issue in Granite Valley.
In where?
Granite Valley. Sea Bunches area. I heard something from Ryan Collins yesterday, but I haven't received anything from Jeff on it yet. But I understand that the same person that's been going all over the county and other counties trying to grab water.
Aquatic or something like that?
Oh, yeah, okay, so.
Everybody's aware of that now?
Well, or we probably need to, if it's something where they filed, have they filed for the water?
They, they were, they filed somewhere because the Water District and everybody was going to put up protests.
It has been in the paper for the last seven weeks.
So we need to put it on our next agenda so that we can officially protest. Thank you.
And that's about all I have.
And I don't really have anything. I have meetings coming up.
Grass Valley is.
Oh, I was going to ask the next Grass Valley one. Could I do that one? The end of August?
Yes.
If that was.
I'm on for that one.
Yeah, I know. Is, do you have an objection if I do it instead?
Why?
It just works out better for my schedule, but if you don't want to.
Okay, because I will tell you that I will be gone for the second meeting in November. Pretty much I will be gone all of November.
So. So you're saying when your term would, or time would come next time you're not.
Yeah, I would like to switch. But if.
You went to the last meeting, correct?
Yeah.
So if you do.
I was up for this.
But it might just delay you by one.
I don't.
It doesn't matter. I mean, whatever, yeah. We can talk about it at the end of the month. We have another meeting before that.
I, I've already talked about several of these, but we had a library board meeting last week. We have a senior center advisory board tomorrow of which, so as you've been doing, we'll be at that meeting. And, and we're working on a, a time or a date for an airport advisory. Eleven fifteen is approaching. Is there?
Can you pass those down? You do public comment.
Yeah, I'm looking at something. Do we, I'm just remembering in the package, is that the block grant at the end here? I'm going to wait a couple of minutes so we can do our eleven fifteen before we do public comments. I'll do public comments after.
Just public comment.
Yeah. Oh, we did it at the beginning. And then we do it again at the end of the. So this is the signature page on here. We have a public hearing for the twenty twenty-one Nevada State Community Block Grant Program Possible Projects. And we have in our package. Not much. But we already applied.
Oh, that was a different block. Okay.
But right now, we're not eligible at the county, nor are there any funds.
Yeah, okay.
We still go through the process just in case there is something.
So really. Yeah. Well, the one for the senior center stuff, but that was.
That's was COVID, right?
Yeah. So what do we have to do on this one? Anybody have a comment? Commissioners have comments?
Especially if we're not eligible.
I don't know if they looked at any projects yet. Usually they do sewer or something like that.
Okay. So we can go to public input. Public comment and discussion. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Yes, sir.
For the record, Carl Turner, Chairman of the General Constitution District, I'd like to just give you a quick update. For the record, Carl Turner, Chairman of the Metro Conservation District, I'd like to just give you a quick update on Conservation District. We now have a full board. Quick review of the members on the board, Steve Foster, and we appreciate the commission for appointing him. There's a lot of synergy between what Steve does and Conservation District. We have Mac Moisey as the city representative. Mac is a retired mining engineer and is currently a prop adjuster. We have Paul Schler, who you're well familiar with. Paul is handling the. Well, sound service that the district provides all over the county, but they may address that. We have Elizabeth Umar, who is a farmer and union builder and a teacher in Atlantic. We got Dory Malcarros and myself in Lovelock Valley, and we've just. Included Melissa Jones as a supervisor, and she is the new FSA advisor and a science teacher, which we've not had a science teacher here in the past. This is wonderful, very exciting. A lot of the district's efforts are towards ag literacy. That's one of her passions.
That's great.
There isn't.
Very exciting.
But we've also lost an mechanic.
Pardon me.
Can you say something that that you?
Yes, I'm sorry. I I sent, I had the stuff on top of my desktop that I was supposed to send this to fill out. And that's in the works. We've got a couple of demonstration projects going. One is here in Upper Valley where there's a plant health and vigor problem. The old channel. Is huge. It's forty two feet wide somewhere else. Just the area from Meridian West holds seventy six acre feet of water. And it subs out into the crock land, some places as much as three hundred feet. So the district has just ordered some sensitivity water table measuring equipment. So we'll be measuring when waters in the channel, what it is at a hundred feet away, et cetera. So we're getting started on that. Also, one of the big issues are stream flow measuring devices. They wanted to eliminate the stream flow gauge in Emily, and that was protested with the visa. But they've been wanting a stream flow gauge at Rose Creek. The problem is they run from thirty to thirty five thousand dollars. I don't know how much of that's equipment versus in our CS going down the mountain at the bottom of the stream. We're looking at sensitive measurement devices that. Would cost less than five thousand. So we'll be demonstrating something like that in the near future.
Why do they want to eliminate the one at Emily?
They just didn't want to maintain it. But they've changed their mind on that due to a protest that was raised loudly at the. But Benny has always said we need to gauge Rose Creek as well. So the district will be looking and see what we can do. Protecting Jeff Anderson and working. We've just turned in a grant request for a little pollinator grant. So it's like five hundred dollars to buy plants for pollinators. So we just turned that in at the end of July. Last Friday, we were notified that we were approved for a twenty five thousand dollar grant. From the National Association Conservation Districts to do a resource needs assessment for the entire town.
That's great. Gosh.
So that's three point nine million acres.
Yeah.
And we hired a lady by the name of Tracy Jean Wolf, who has done two of these resource assessments for other towns. And she says she probably won't need to use all of that money. So I'll be speaking to the. Virgin County Water Conservation District tomorrow about including the community disaster. Since that's owned by county residents, we should be able to include that in our resource needs assessment. So we're, we're very excited about that.
You're doing a lot. That's awesome.
Yeah.
So and I really pleased that we have a broad representation of supervisors too. In the past, it was basically Lovelock Valley. So that's changed. And I will follow up in Grass Valley area, let's start with Bridgetts.
Thank you very, very much.
So thank you.
Anybody else on Zoom? Justin? No? See any other ones?
I'll make a motion to approve in five or second.
We have a motion in a second for approval of vouchers. All those in favor? All right. Motion passed. Hearing nothing further. Meeting adjourned.